It's a call to order. Um, so I'm calling the meeting to order. But before we start and approve the agenda, um, I want to take a moment to pause and have a moment of silence. Um, because many of us are shaken by what has been happening uh in the US Capitol today. Um, no matter what your politics are, seeing a threat to our democratic institutions goes against everything we are as Americans. So we will continue with our civic duty tonight um in a civil and respectful manner. And we pray for peace and unity in our federal government. If we could take a moment. Okay. Um, I want to item number two, approve the official agenda. Um, does anyone have any uh changes or edits? I know um Dr. Don said to strike facilities, you're going to report at next meeting on that. Um, anybody else have anything else that they want to edit or change?
Can you add vote to the FY twenty-two budget, please? Because there's no vote listed. Thanks.
Yeah.
And I do want to say that I don't have the minutes for the health and wellness for the last meeting, but I do want to report on invite asking to think about inviting these uh physical ed teachers to one of our school committee meetings to talk about how um phys ed is being done uh both for remote learners as well as the hybrid learners in the new environment.
Okay, great. Uh, okay, first up, it's a citizen speak. Uh, we are going to have a fifteen minute segment of citizen citizen speak tonight. Um, just to go over citizen speak um best practice. Uh, under Robert Rules of Order in our open meeting setting, we have a citizen speak for anyone, any Miltonian. Um, uh, would like to come up and um speak, share their thoughts um about anything relating to the schools. Uh, we ask that you keep it to three minutes so as many people can speak within that fifteen minute time limit. Um, Dr. Spalding, do you mind just giving a high sign when they have thirty seconds left? And when you see Dr. Spalding, just keep an um view of that to wrap it up. Um, and without further ado, I'll have um Mike Lynch promote the first person. Oh, also too, I'm sorry, just make sure that you identify yourself um first name, last name, and street address for our minutes. Thank you.
Uh, first citizen uh with a raised hand is Ms. Alyssa Perkins.
Hello, my name is Dr. Alyssa Perkins and I live at one eighteen Walcott Road. I'm joining today as a former member of the Health Committee, which was disbanded before school actually started. Over the summer, the role of the role of the Health Committee was to guide the district on the science in order to open schools safely. Since the dissipation of the committee, the science and understanding of COVID nineteen has advanced considerably. However, the district has failed to move in time with the evolving science. We keep hearing that things will improve in our district when it is safe. And I am asking you, Mr. Jett, and members of the school committee to indicate to us what is the definition of safe that you are using? Who determines when it is safe enough to add more hours to have students for full days? How can we be, how can we, the parents, be assured that the district will move forward and modify their plans when you have not given us your definition of safe? When will Milton Public Schools consider it to be safe? To be clear, DESI, the AAP, the WHO, and the CDC have all indicated that a return to full-day in-person school with mitigation measures is safe now. This is especially clear at the elementary school level. It is safe in many districts throughout the Commonwealth. In fact, Cambridge announced yesterday that they will be moving toward almost full in-person at the elementary school and improving their hybrid for more in-person time at middle and high school. Newton, as of this week, has full days with lunch for elementary and will be doing the same for uh middle and high schools later this month. However, Milton has not yet deemed it safe. So I would like to ask, what is the definition of safe that you are using? I have heard you, Mr. Jett, tell us that students will return to school when there's no longer a need to distance. I just want to make sure that everybody on this call understands that it is very possible that there will be a need to distance in public for much, if not all, of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two academic year. What about the vaccine? Will that make it safe? K three twelve educators are fortunately early in phase two in Massachusetts. Let's assume optimistically that this happens before the end of this academic year. What about a first dose as early as February? Remember, too, that it will take five to six weeks from the first dose for them to become immune. Once they are immune, is that when it will be safe enough for students to resume in-person school at that time? Please keep in mind that at that time, most family members will still not be vaccinated. That likely won't happen till the summer at the earliest and possibly not until the middle of next academic year. Is it once the adult household members of students are vaccinated, is that when it will be considered safe? What about, will it not be safe enough until all of the students are vaccinated? Please remember that the Moderna vaccine is only approved for ages eighteen years and up, and Pfizer has only been approved for ages sixteen years and up. They're currently studying these vaccines in children, but only in ages twelve years and older. They have not even begun to study the vaccine among younger students. And we can expect that they won't be vaccinated until late into the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two academic year at the absolute earliest. You can surely understand that it is not acceptable to keep students out of full school through the entire period of next academic year. The reality is that everyone has a different threshold for safe enough. Even with a vaccine, it is important to knowledge, important to acknowledge that for the foreseeable future, the risk will not be zero. Unfortunately, in this case, perfectly safe may be more like a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow than something we are going to be able to achieve over the next year or perhaps even two years. As a public health professional, I have been trained to recognize that we need to look at all health outcomes. COVID is not the only outcome here. The absence of in-person school has educational consequences, as we heard about on the last school committee call and the literacy performance in our district. It has health consequences as well. Mental health admissions among children are skyrocketing, as is childhood obesity. Children are losing academic gains and suffering greatly even in our district. We have heard many reports from parents during these school committee meetings indicating the damage that is being done. How long will we allow this to continue? What is our timeline, since it's not now, even though the science suggests that it should be? Um, I'm asking you all, committee members and Superintendent Jett, please give us your definition of safe so that the goalposts are firmly planted and we know when we can expect our students to return to the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Uh, next speaker is Mr. Mike Perkins.
All right, there we go. Hi, my name is Mike Perkins. I live at one eighteen Walcott Road. I understand how difficult this time is for all and especially individuals in the roles of decision-making in leadership. I do not envy the positions you are in and the work that you are doing. I understand the pressure you are all under to do your duties on this committee. I do feel that you are failing in your attempts to successfully administer the Milton Public School System of Education. How this committee and district leadership have ignored the science, data, and real-world examples of safety of in-person schooling is flummoxing. Be it parochial schools, private institutions, or public districts around the country and globe, it has been shown that school is not a driver of the spread of COVID nineteen. Transmission of the virus within schools is not tied to that of the surrounding community, and it is actually lower than most of the in-person activities being undertaken each day by our population at large, including many of you. That our children's education, emotional well-being, and in some cases, physical well-being has been sacrificed so that this committee can ruffle as few feathers as possible is abhorrent. The fact that this board presents at least the specter of a conflict of interest with some members being a part of the Milton Educators Association is also concerning. As a building department official for an adjacent municipality, I have been privy to and seen innovative ways in which in-person learning can be achieved and some sense of normalcy can be maintained. At the elementary level, I have seen outside recess and meals using offices, auditoriums, cafeterias, and gymnasiums as classrooms and the use of other town-owned buildings for schooling. I'm not aware of any of this being utilized in Milton. Our district has thrown up their hands and said, this is the best we can do. That effort is falling well short of satisfactory and has led our district and community to become somewhat of a punchline among neighboring cities and towns. Our district's youngest children learn in-person fewer than eight hours a week on average, despicable in any time or place, but even more so in a town with the resources and level of community involvement as Milton. It is difficult to reconcile the self-congratulatory tone of much of the correspondence coming from the district's leadership in the past four months with the fact that Milton Public Schools do not even meet mandated minimum thresholds for education set by the state. The consequences of these decisions have been a complete abandonment of Milton's children when they need us in their community the most. Without socialization, educational engagement, and contact with the outside world as a whole, I have witnessed my own children regress in their development, both emotionally and intellectually. In a household with two full-time, essential working parents, it has been difficult at best to educate our two young children. Leaving a nine- and ten-year-old home alone to manage their multiple logins, websites, videos, assignments, and learning is not possible. So my wife and I have tried to adjust our schedules in order to be home while the children are attending remote school. As you might guess, this is a trying task. In that vein, I would like to extend an invitation to any member of this committee, district administration or otherwise, who works full-time and does not have elementary-age children.
Thirty-minute warning, sir.
To spend a remote and in-person school day in my home, bring all the materials you need for work, and we will allow you to see the tears, frustration, outbursts, and difficulties that come with working and teaching at the same time while also dealing with Wi-Fi outages, Zoom work conferences, phone calls, and other surprise activities. Our door is open.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Uh, next speaker is Mr. John Vargas.
Hi, folks.
Hi.
I hope you can see me. Um, John Vargas, uh, I live in three oh seven Thatcher Street. Uh, I have a nine-year-old and an eight-year-old in the Cunningham School District. I don't have any prepared remarks. There's my kid over there. Uh, I am a more or less a common citizen in Milton. Um, I don't tend to get involved in politics. Uh, I came to this town with the trust that we have very good people, smart people, running the town, running our schools. And uh, and for the most part, um, when the COVID happened, uh, like many families uh around us, we said, hey, we're going to do our part. We're going to, we're going to hunker down and, and, and support everyone and make sure that we, you know, we are responsible to each other, right? And we knew that the school was going through some difficult times at that time. And we, we did our part as team players to say, hey, listen, teachers, schools, administrators, students, parents, we're all in this together. Um, and so let's do our part. But I put a lot of faith in the school and the, in the administration as well as the committee that a good solution will come out of this for the new school year. When the new school year happened, uh, things looked promising. And then all of a sudden, a random model showed up, uh, which really, at the end of the day, made it even more difficult for working parents like myself and my wife and the Perkins family. Um, long and short of it is, we still kind of said, okay, listen, let's give this a chance. Let's work with the data. And now we're probably what, four months in? And myself and the folks that I speak with, our friends, our families, our neighbors, we're all starting to feel like, you know, the school committee is really not uh willing to make any changes that align with the data that we're seeing uh in public, right? We do believe, and there is enough data out there that says we can put our kids back into school more in-person. Um, I want to see the school committee, like, I think you guys are very smart people, that's why you're there. Uh, but, uh, but not being flexible to the situation that's happening here and saying, hey, we should consider other options, we should think out of the box and, and be more aligned with, with what, what this, what the school's reputation is all about. Uh, being able to, you know, to, to bring back the, the, the way that this, uh, that, you know, I basically, it's very disappointing that the school is not performing to the standards based on this DESI stuff. And I think you guys can do absolutely better, right? And uh, figure out a more creative way to bring our kids back into school. My kids are, you can see the, the, it changing with the kids as well, right? My kids were all also in, in this, right, in this fight, saying, let's do this. But now they're at this point, like, when is this crying going to be over, right? So I appreciate.
Thirty-minute warning, sorry, thirty seconds, sorry.
All right, so, so I appreciate the time, but um, you know, we all have kids. Think about the children here, the kids are first. We, they are social distancing, but if they can have hockey activities and swimming activities and everything else in the school and still be safe, I really do think that the schools can uh figure out a way to be safe as well and put more kids into school uh in person. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Uh, next we have a speaker, Bonnie Bate.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hello, my, my name is Bonnie Bate and I live on Pleasant Street with two children attending the Cunningham School. Although I have spoken to you through email, I think it's important to let others on this call know what the DESI information has shown us. DESI released a dashboard highlighting each district and the amount of in-person learning time. Three hundred and three districts submitted to DESI by November second. Sixty-one of these schools are one hundred percent remote. This results in two hundred and forty-two hybrid and in-person schools. Milton is in the bottom five percent for in-person hours being offered to first graders among the two hundred and forty-two hybrid in-person schools. Within this hybrid in-person group, fourth, excuse me, fourth grade is in the bottom four percent. Seventh and tenth grade are at twenty-five percent. We are bottom dwellers. This is public information and available to everyone so everybody can see for themselves. I collected the data and I shared it with you on January third. I also added per pupil expenditure, number of pupils, student-teacher ratios, COVID rates. The data has shown that Milton is not unique by any of these measures. Many districts with higher metrics or worse metrics than ours are offering significantly more in-person learning time. How is it possible that out of two hundred and forty-two hybrid in-person schools that the best Milton can do for its youngest learners is seven and a half hours a week? How are you representing families in Milton and prioritizing children when two hundred and twenty-nine or ninety-five percent of these hybrid in-person districts are offering more in-person hours than us? Eighty percent of hybrid in-person schools allow their children to eat at school. Please explain why Milton students can't eat at school and why other districts are offering more in-person hours than us. Milton students, excuse me, this specific question regarding lunch cannot go unanswered tonight. There's a hundred and ninety-five other districts letting their children eat at school. You have an obligation to the public listening tonight to explain why lunch is not allowed when nearly two hundred districts are letting them eat in school safely. Out of two hundred and forty-two hybrid in-person schools, only twelve, twelve are worse than Milton for its offering of in-person hours. Two hundred and twenty-nine are offering more than us. This is deeply, deeply disturbing, such a blow to a community that used to aim for excellence in education. How have all these other schools successfully negotiated their MOAs? Will Milton?
Just thirty minutes, just like thirty seconds, sorry. Yep, go ahead.
These other schools have successfully negotiated their MOAs. If you want to bring back elementary every day for half-days, that will be a nice improvement in in-person hours. But we all know the biggest issue to significant increases in in-person hours for all grades is lunch. The original hybrid plan had this included. The return to task force group developed a plan with it in there. Mary Gormley conceded to the union and removed lunch. And then she subs- And then she subsequently told the members of the Return to Task Force Group that this half-day thing was only going to last a couple of weeks. We are now sitting in January.
I'm sorry, Bonnie, I'm going to ask you.
And from the start, you have had no plans to increase in-person hours. You are saying that you just found out in December. That's untrue. We have been telling you for months that we've been far inferior to other districts. You just ask any parent in any town. It's not that you just found out. We've been telling you. It hasn't been that hard to figure this out. I hope you are going to take this information and develop a plan to substantially increase more in-person hours. And I hope you're shooting for more than the minimum of the SLT and the DESI requirement. Because if you're just going for minimum, you're still going to have a lot of pissed-off parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're at two minutes, so we'll have one more speaker and then we have to move on.
The next speaker is Ms. Alessandro Rofo Higgins.
Hi, sorry about that. My name's Alessandra Higgins, and I live at Sixth Jill Kathleen Lane. And I have a fifth grader and a seventh grader. I just wanted to thank you, Superintendent Jett, all the faculty and staff. I realize this has not been an ideal situation for anybody this year, whether it's teachers, students, parents, or staff. And I do know that everybody is trying their best. However, my concern, as Ms. Bate was saying, is that Milton, among other school districts, isn't reaching the standard of learning time for students. That being said, even though it's only 15 minutes a day, that adds up to 990 minutes since the first day of school, which is 16 and a half hours. I'd like to hear the plan or ideas for compensatory learning, whether it's for those with learning disabilities, as well for those students who don't have learning disabilities. And as Ms. Bate also mentioned, ideally, it wouldn't be just to meet those minimum requirements because I think we can do better for the students. I know you can't respond right at this moment, but I do hope that you will later on. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes Citizen Speak. We're moving on to the Chair's Report. Under the Chair's Report, the first thing that we're going to report out on is we have an update on the superintendent search process. I'm going to hand it over to Member Margaret Epplehart, who is the lead on that process. And she has, I believe, a presentation to share with us.
Hi. Can everyone hear me okay? I just want to say, Happy New Year to all of you. And Happy New Year to all of the community that's watching. I know that it's not really happy in the way that we define happy, but it is a new year with lots of hope and possibility in it. And I'm hopeful that we will be in a different place when we look at the new, as we move through this new year. And so I just wanted to say that all to you. And I just wanted to echo what Sheila said in the beginning, that today has been a very trying day for our country. It has been personally trying for me to see what is unraveling in our country and to feel the angst and worry of our fellow citizens. And I just say a silent prayer in my heart for all those people and for everyone that's worried tonight, for people they know in Washington DC and for people around the world. And I just want to ask everyone to take a deep breath and let it out. And let's enter this conversation in that peaceful mode because I think it's an important place to start. I'm going to share my screen with everybody. Tonight, I have a presentation on the results of the survey that we conducted a little over a month ago. I would like to thank everyone who participated in the survey. You will see from our first slide that we had over 2,205 total participants in the survey. And you can see the breakdown from the participants is that most of the participants were parents. Parents are guardians of students in the district. We had staff and faculty from the Milton Public Schools participating, Milton residents participating, and then others who just defined their category as other. So according to Glenn Kuescher at MASC, this was a record for a number of participants. And I was very pleased that so many people participated and that so many people shared their thoughts and ideas in the survey. We asked people to identify themselves in the survey by race or ethnicity. As you can see from this graph, 61% of those participants were white. 8.9% were African-American. 5% identified as Asian. 3.8% identified as Hispanic. 7.2% identified as multiracial. There was a category of people who said they prefer not to answer. And then there was a category of people that said other, prefer to self-identify. There were some questions in, or comments in the survey about why we asked this question. And then there was some comments about that we sort of limited the way that people were going to identify themselves by the way that we presented, choose race, ethnicity. But that we don't have a particular way that we ask that question in the district. So we used the one that we used in the summer when we were doing surveys for families. We're hoping to work with Somali and with the district to have a better way for people to identify themselves more fully in a survey in the past. But as you can see here, we live in a very diverse community. And these were some of the ways that people self-described by race or ethnicity. And I wanted to say, and there were some people who asked, why is this important? But we have had multiple conversations at school committee over the past year that it's important to consider all perspectives and to particularly amplify the voice of those members of our community who have not participated or whose voices have not been included in the conversation. So the first question that we asked were, what are the important issues facing the district? And we gave people lots of choices. And we asked them to rate them from least important, one, to most important, five. And this was the category, these were the choices that people can choose from. I won't read them all out loud, but you can take a moment to look at them. And this presentation will be available for the community to look at and to digest and to use for further conversations as we move through the year. When you looked at the important issues for, as we begin to think about appointing a permanent superintendent, this was the weighted responses. If you recall, people could choose from one to five. So the way that the survey did was it waited in response, those that had the most responses, and then on to the least. As you can see from this slide, that at the top of those scales was educational leadership, college career readiness, communication with parents and community, curriculum development, health and safety, staff relations and morale, technology and 21st century education, and equity and inclusion. And then all the way down to the one that had the least weighted responses, collective bargaining. This was for all respondents. So these were the top 10 issues for all respondents. What are the important issues for the district as we consider appointing a permanent superintendent? And as you can see from this chart, that educational leadership was at the top, and then the ones that followed, career and college readiness, communication, curriculum development, health and safety, which included COVID-19, was rated number five in the overall respondents of the district. Staff relations and morale, and equity and technology and 21st century skills, equity, inclusion, academic standards for all, and then teachers instructional use of technology. So this was how all respondents rated the important issues for the district. We asked participants then to consider, what are the skills and qualities that you are looking for in a permanent superintendent? To refresh your memory, these are the skills and qualities that we put on the survey. Like, again, I will not read them all to you aloud, but you can take a moment to look at this slide and recall that some of the things we asked about were strong leadership and fiscal management, instructional leadership for diverse learners, a commitment and track record of anti-racist education reform, values to social emotional well-being of staff and students, applications of technology, recruiting diverse staff, and inclusive decision-making. If you have any questions as I'm going and you want to stop me, just stop me. I can't see you all because I'm just looking at the slides. These were the weighted averages for the skills and qualities for all respondents. You can look from the chart. Some of the things are cut off on the chart in this graph, and I apologize for that. I couldn't quite get the graphs to go exactly as I wanted. But you can see that academic excellence, valuing social emotional well-being, leadership skills, educational leadership, critical and strategic thinking, strong interpersonal skills, forward-thinking, fosters inclusivity, and innovative leadership were in some of the top 10. And then on down through the rest of the skills and qualities we are looking for in a permanent superintendent. And here you can see the top 10 rated by all respondents. You can see that many of the skills and qualities they are looking for have to deal with leadership skills, collaboration, and also fostering inclusivity and encouraging and valuing parent and guardian engagement. The next part of our survey, we broke down the survey by race and ethnicity to amplify all voices and to make sure that we are considering this as perspectives of all of our citizens in Milton. And again, we had the categories as defined in the survey. There were multiple ways that you could identify, but these were the ones that were in the survey. So these were the important issues weighted by response for race and ethnicity of those respondents who identified themselves as African-American. As you can see in the top categories here, health and safety, anti-racist education reform, educational leadership, college career readiness, equity and inclusion, diversity of staff, curriculum, and reducing the achievement gap rated high from these respondents in the top 10, and some of them in the top five, slightly different from the overall respondents that we looked at. And when you looked at the issues weighted by race and ethnicity of those who identified as Asian, you can see that their educational leadership was at the top, but then health and safety, college and career readiness, curriculum development, equity, inclusion, communication with parents, teachers and technology, 21st century skills, teachers' use of that technology, and anti-racist education reform rated in the top 10 for this category of self-identified citizens in Milton. We're going to compare them side by side in a few minutes. Here again, you can see those that identified by the Hispanic. And you can see again, in the top 10, there's equity, inclusion, health and safety, anti-racist education reform, reducing the achievement gap, and communication with parents, diversity of staff. Also, I would note that in the top 10 here was a reference to special education. For those that identified as multiracial, you can see these were the top issues for that group. Again, including educational leadership, college career readiness, health and safety, technology and academic standards for all, and equity and inclusion. If I'm going too fast, you have a question, just let me know. Here were the important issues rated by weighted responses for those that identified as white. Here you can see educational, again, some similar responses in terms of some of the things that were in the top 10 category, college and career readiness, health and safety, curriculum development, and equity and inclusion, reducing the achievement gap as well. When you look at the top 10 side by side for the race and ethnicity, you can see that for those of our fellow citizens that identified in these categories, health and safety, anti-racist education reform, educational leadership, college and career readiness, and equity and inclusion are always in the top 10. Reducing the achievement gap and academic standards for all, the same as for those that in our all respondents. And here is side by side weighted responses by race and ethnicity for a multiracial group and for those who identified as white. You can see some similarities and you can see some issues that are more amplified and of higher concern for certain groups of people. When you look at the skills and qualities of a superintendent rated by race and ethnicity, I did not make a bunch of graphs. When I post this on the website, I will include the graphs for this section. But I know that there's a lot of graphs in the presentation. Here you can see that in the top 10, for those that identified as African-American, valuing the social emotional well-being of staff and students, strong interpersonal community relations, strong and collaborative leadership skills, educational leadership and team building, commitment to academic excellence for all, fostering inclusivity, inclusive decision-making, strategic thinking, and a commitment to a track record to anti-racist education reform were in the top 10 categories. And you can see some similarities and some differences for those identified in the Asian group. When you look at skills and qualities here for Hispanic, identify Hispanic, and those who identify as white, you can see that there is, again, a value for the social and emotional well-being of staff and students, the need for strong and collaborative leadership skills, for fostering inclusivity, and again, a commitment to and track record of anti-racist education reform, and the ability to think critically, strategically, and a system-oriented fashion. And of course, instructional leadership for diverse learners appears in several categories here. For those who identify as multiracial, you can see here that commitment to academic excellence was in this as well as fostering inclusivity and the social emotional well-being of staff and students, and valuing and encouraging parent and guardian engagement. So we had an open response category at the end of the survey. And the question simply said, is there anything else that you would like to tell us about the superintendent search? And we had 854 open responses. People wrote some simple, short things. Some people wrote very long paragraphs with thoughts, suggestions, comments, and concerns. So I took the 854 open responses and I categorized them into, I call them buckets or categories, of what were the things that people addressed most in those categories. I will say that, you know, this is from myself looking at these categories. So it comes from my own biases and when I look at anything, what that might be. But for the most part, these were, in the open response categories, these were the main things that people wrote about, expressed thoughts about, and shared a vision for. So the first one was about leadership. There were many comments about leadership and about transparency, about putting students at the center, about being able to inspire principals to be an out-of-the-box thinker and to surround himself or herself with a strong team. There were multiple comments about curriculum. There were several, many comments about supporting French immersion and continuing that program, more, some about STEM and STEM learning for students, and the importance of special education. And there were also comments about extracurricular, which we haven't talked a lot about during this process, but parents really urging the next superintendent to support the wonderful extracurricular work, extracurricular activities that are available for students in the community. There were many, many, many comments about communication, about being the kind of person who can listen and collaborate and be a strong community partner. There were comments, many, many, many comments about race and diversity. And I took this quote from one of the comments that people had put down because I thought it pretty much summed up what people had said, but proactively pursue diversity, equity, and inclusivity by openly sharing, analyzing, and addressing data that reveals inequities. There were comments about public health and return to school and the need to have a superintendent who knows how to manage a school in a pandemic and listen to CDC recommendations and advice from health experts. There was also a category of comments about emotional health, that we need a superintendent who is empathetic, flexible, reflective, compassionate, and above all, ethical. There were comments about the parameters of the superintendent search. And that one was about that we should have a national search with a diverse pool of candidates, with a fresh pair of eyes, and to have it be a person of color. And there was, of the 854 comments, 265 people who wrote. who wrote in the comment in support of Mr. Jett to hire him to be the permanent superintendent. So these were just some of the sample open responses from the community. Again, I took just a sampling of them. There were 854 of them. So this is just a small, very small sampling. But I thought that they reflected some of the more poignant things that people wrote in their comments. The ability to listen to the parents, guide them in their efforts to support their children, but create a culture in the schools where staffs feel valued and supported by administrators, integrity, honesty and civil respect for differences of opinion. We are at a reckoning. Our community needs strong equity and systems-focused leadership to serve all kids guided by evidence, skilled practice and compassion. Someone who fosters inclusivity, diversity as well as academic excellence, transparency, fairness and approachability. And these two quotes sort of summed up some of the general feelings of people. Kindness, a willingness to have difficult conversations that aren't always popular, have the best interests of students and staff in mind, invested in the community but not intimidated by people with a louder voice, fights for students whose parents are not able to. And hopefully Milton Public Schools can find a superintendent fit for the world we live in. Somebody committed to the facts and truth and to facing reality with a creative and resourceful mind while putting the well-being of the school community first, the community as a whole in all its diversity. So from there, I came up with what I call a portrait of a superintendent. There is an activity that you can participate in called Portrait of a Graduate, where districts go through this process of looking at what do you want a graduate to look like from your school system when they leave you after however many years they're with you. So I put together from the comments and from the survey, this portrait of a superintendent. And I'll read it to you briefly. It says innovative, so if we're looking for a superintendent, we're looking for an innovative, collaborative, forward-thinking educator with a commitment to academic excellence for all students, a reflective, decisive leader who can harness the resources of a diverse staff and involve parent guardian community to address the following needs of the district. Prioritizing health and safety of all students and staff with particular attention to social and emotional well-being. Create inclusive and equitable learning environments through curriculum development and implementation with particular focus on representative history, anti-racist education reform, instruction for diverse learners and high academics for all students. Leverage technology and 21st century skills to prevent, to prepare students for careers and college. Continue development of a strategic plan that fosters inclusivity, considers all perspectives and places the needs of a diverse student body at the center. So when I shared that portrait of a superintendent with my children, they said to me, well, that's a lot, that's a lot of nice buzzwords, Mom. And, and it does a really nice job of summarizing the survey. But what does that mean next? And what I would suggest to my fellow school committee members and to the community at large is that those are goals, those are lofty ideas that we have as a community about what we want our district to look like moving forward. But the real task ahead is to hire a superintendent who will work with the school committee and the community to turn those goals into measurable objectives and outcomes for the districts and for the students. So that's the task ahead. There's a lot of really good information here about what people are looking for, but those are goals. Those are ideas that now need to be implemented through policy, through budget and through working with the community by hiring someone who can turn things into measurable outcomes for students. The next steps for us as a school committee, after we discuss the survey this evening, is that we will be having two listening sessions. One on January 12th at 4:00 PM for Milton Public School staff, one on January 14th at 7:00 PM for the Milton Public School community. And then on January 20th, at our meeting, we will discuss the survey and the two listening sessions and consider next steps. I want to thank Glenn Kuchar at MASC for helping with the survey. And I want to thank all of the citizens of Milton for participating, for sharing your thoughts and ideas and being so invested in the future of our schools for your children. Thank you. I know that's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot. Well, first of all, Margaret, thank you again for leading this and this is our first, our first step of the survey. It's a big undertaking, a lot of work, a lot of partnership with Massachusetts Association of School Committees, like you said. So as Chair, I want to again, thank you for taking the lead on this. I'd like to open it up to the school committee. If people have any comments, issues, concerns, Dr. Krkic.
Um, I actually, I actually completed the survey as a parent of Milton Public School child. But I can't remember whether there was a question about anything except for race. Were there questions about income level or education or anything like that?
No.
So we didn't aggregate in those ways, just in terms.
We did not. That's correct. Yes.
And, and I just want to echo, thank you. This was very, very informative, very helpful. I had looked at the presentation before this, but getting your explanations of some of this was even more helpful than just looking at the, at the presentation. And I want to echo what Chair Varela just said about all of your hard work on this. There's more hard work to come. So thank you in advance for that and thanks for the work you continue to do.
You're welcome. Oh, Betty, okay, just talk, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to thank you. I'm going to echo what Elaine said. I'm going to thank you for doing this. And I love the format of the way you made the presentation, the way you look, the way you can look at the graphs in this presentation is very helpful. And I also want to say how impressed I was at the number of people who participated in this survey. I heard that you said that Glenn said that no one has had the kind of participation that we had. So that's very impressive and I thank everybody for their, their efforts to do this because I know everyone's really busy. So it sounds like it's a priority for people. So that's good.
Anyone else? Kevin?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Member Edward Hard. This is, this is true yeoman's work. And we, I appreciate it. I was wondering if there was a way to further sort of disaggregate the the respondents that referenced Mr. Jett directly in the free response and sort of parse that a little bit more to see how many were members of the community, how many were, were parents, how many were professionals in the, in the MPS? I think that, that would be helpful as well.
Um, yes, I believe when I spoke to Glenn Kuchar last week, he said that there, there is, there is a way to, for him to sort of pull some of that information out. I just haven't, I did not ask him to do that. So I can certainly ask him to do that for sure. Yep. Ada.
Thanks for me too, Margaret.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you've done a great job moving this forward. And thanks to the whole community for responding. It's wonderful to hear from, from folks what, what they're thinking. And we need to do that more. You know, we've heard some folks at Citizen Speak speaking up. But I'm really looking forward to the listening sessions next week also to hear directly from people, their thoughts on, on this subject. I also want to thank you, Margaret, for going through all those open responses. That's a big job to, to be able to summarize that. And I appreciate your efforts on that and look forward to our next steps.
Oh, you're welcome. And I, and I did, you know, some people reached out to me about the survey and I, the survey results, I, I actually presented them. I gave them to Somali. He's our Director of Educational Equity. I certainly hope that I got her title correct. And because I really do think there's a lot of information in the survey that will inform decisions moving forward by different groups that are working in the district to have all voices heard, to look at curriculum, to look at our practices and to think about the best ways to move the district forward in those really important areas. And so I certainly hope that you, that people feel that voice are heard and that we are going to use information, not just to have a presentation, information in here that really can help move the district in different directions. If you think about what's really important to people and then how does that look in implementation?
Margaret, can I ask?
Yeah.
So I know that there's, there were two, I mean, I took it as a parent as well. I remember that there was two open responses.
Yes.
So the, so can you just clarify? The, the last one was, I remember, was there anything else that you want to say about the process? And what was the first one?
I can't, I, I can't, I put the, the surveys are over there on my, in my huge pile of stuff over there. And I think it was something about what do you want to tell us about yourself or there, there were only like a hundred and something responses there. And I tried to combine some of those with the, with the, with the open responses that asked specifically about the superintendent survey. But I can go pull, that question is over there. I don't remember off the top of my head. I apologize. I, I just don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, I just, I couldn't.
But I'll go, I can get the thing over there.
Yeah, clarity. And my, Emily, yeah, my, I don't know, my only other comment was that I do, I, I do find it interesting that at the end of the day, like, you know, overall the community is looking for, you know, for the same things, like on, sort of like the top four or five. Both by ethnicity, race, you know, that everybody, you know, it's, you know, educational leadership and you know, college and career readiness, etc., etc. So it's interesting to see that even though it's broken down by ethnicity and race at the end of the day across the board, even though it does vary, how, how many similarities there are. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's important as we move forward and as we hire a permanent superintendent for the district that we continue to look at the decisions that we make from those perspectives. And to recognize that while there were lots of similarities, there were also things that showed up more in, in people that identified by race or ethnicity that was not white. So the importance for anti-racist education reform, the diversity of learners. And even then, the, the need, the staff morale, staff diversity, all of the things that we have been talking about. And so one of the things that I've been thinking about is I've, I've spent a lot of time looking at all this information is that for the things that were at the, at the low end for the issues, right? So at the low end of, for almost every person who responded and for all respondents, the issues about special education for English language learners, for early childhood, even for facilities and fiscal management, they were at the lower end of this scale. And again, it's a weighted response. So if you looked at the percentages, it balances, it balances out in that way. But I do think that, I mean, and perhaps some of those things people are happy with. So it would be less of an issue at the moment. But I do think, thinking about those particular things, particularly special education and English language learners, both of which are mandated by, by federal government, by laws and, and, and need to be dealt with in a district in a very different way. Those two things combined with early education are also going to get at the equity and inclusion that people are talking about. So if you, if you elevate those issues and you really examine them, as we found out from our, our presentation from V, right? And you, and you think about how those things impact the overall goals of the, of the district to be a more equitable, more inclusive district, I really think that those are things that we need to keep at the forefront in addition to the issues that were at the top at the moment. Of course, health and safety is that, is in the forefront of everyone's mind. But when you pair that with social, emotional well-being of staff and students, and then you think about the ways we can think about that for, in the, in the budget and in policy moving forward, combine that with equity and inclusion, that is how you build a district that reflects what you truly believe, right? That's what you do.
And I also would want to say like from the, I, I agree with that, but from the nuts in both side of things that facilities was not up there across the board when that is, you know, our crisis like in our district, that we don't have enough space because of the over-enrollment. And, and, you know, and, and the next couple of years, how, how the buildings are going to have to be converted, you know, in, in the interim before a new school is built to make the, the space. I mean, that's, you know, you have to be innovative with your leadership team of how that, how to make that happen and, you know, so that we can, we can house more people, you know, especially at the elementary level. So
Right.
Interesting that that wasn't a top issue, but you know.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, so I think that there, so I, I really do think as we think about moving towards the next steps and then the permanent superintendent, that we can craft a, a, a district, a vision for the district moving forward. You know, I, I think that, I certainly hope that, I know it's hard for people sometimes to understand what exactly does the school committee do. And it's very confusing in these times when the role of the school committee seems very arbitrary sometimes. And then, you know, you, what do you vote on? What are you not voting on? What are you doing? You're not doing anything. But in the end, the superintendent and his leadership or her leadership team runs the district, right? We set like a vision and a goal, but it is the responsibility of the superintendent's, superintendents and principals to lead the district in that way. And we hold them accountable through an evaluation system. And we hold ourselves accountable by where do we put our money and how do we make our policies? So I think that moving forward with the community to Ada's point, that I think there needs to be a deeper and more rich understanding of those interplay.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I don't know about the rest of you, but I mean, I, I think especially in this year of COVID and the pandemic and, you know, and I, and I totally understand why that, you know, you know, pre-pandemic, you know, we never had anyone come to Citizen Speak. Half of, you know, half of the citizens that have children that go, he didn't probably even know who we were or who was on the board or that kind of thing. And, and because of that, and I totally get it, they don't quite understand like, like legally what the school committee can and cannot do, you know? And, and I think in a lot of ways, I mean, I think you bring up a good point that I'd actually like, maybe like to touch on because I know we always have a lot of people watching the school committee. But, you know, when, when we're elected to school committee and we have to go to training through the Massachusetts Association of School Committee, one of the key things that we are trained legally of what our role is, is that we do evaluate, you know, we evaluate the superintendent, you know, every year when you have a permanent superintendent, you evaluate. And like we say, and we oversee the budget and advocate money for the budget. We oversee the finance committee and policies for the district. And I, I know that we also sit on numerous advisory committees that we have here. We have a lot of them. We have transportation, we have health and wellness, we have facilities. A lot of corresponding districts do the same thing. But even though those are technically advisory committees to the school committee, really what it is, it's an advisory committee in most cases to the superintendent, that things that are, you know, strategic planning, everything that comes out of those advisory committees are then recommended to the superintendent. Sometimes those things flow over to the school committee if, if it turns into a policy issue that the school committee would then vote on. Or if it turns into anything that needed, you know, budgetary or allocations that we would have to vote on. You know, that comes out of it. But on a day-to-day basis, you know, I, I don't think a lot of people understand that the school committee, we don't run the district. The superintendent runs the district along with their superintendents, their principals and the directors. So, and I also think this year in COVID where where Governor Baker and, and Desi and Jeffrey, Jeff Riley, our commissioner, required that school committees across the Commonwealth had to vote to approve whatever back-to-school plan superintendent's put in place. It's, it's rather unprecedented because usually it's the superintendents run the districts. School committees are required to evaluate, then we do an evaluation and a permanent, we have a permanent superintendent that we follow instructions from Desi of how to do that. But we don't, we don't run the district. And I think a lot of times when people have written to us during these times of what, on, on all the issues, both on the, the race pandemic and the health pandemic that we're dealing with. If you write to the superintendent and you write to us, you know, we can't respond. You know, it's the superintendent that needs to respond. If you write to the school committee alone and say that, you know, you don't think that, 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 that is going well of what people are doing, we can respond. But I just think it's unclear and I, and I understand people don't know that. You know, they think I could probably call or You know, they think I could probably call or Ada Rose Marin could call a, a principal or, you know, a director of athletics and say, da, 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 like, we can't, we, that's not our role. We don't do that. The superintendent runs the district along with his leadership team. And I just think that needs to be clarified. And, and in this role now that we're evaluating what to do about a permanent superintendent, that's a big role for us, like doing this survey, having this listening session. But, um, but even, even now with, uh, what's going to happen with, um, the change, the change in hybrid, you know, that again, those things are sent by the superintendents, the principals, the directors, the leadership, you know, of the district. So just kind of wanted to maybe explain that a little bit because I think that not all parents realize that.
And, um, yeah. Yeah. And Sheila, I, I would like to just acknowledge, again, thank everyone for participating in the survey, for sharing their thoughts and, and for, um, their hopes and vision for the district. And so last thing I'll say this evening is, from my own perspective, as someone who's sat on the committee now for almost five years, the school committee is not a format, um, for community engagement in the way that people wish it were. It's a legislative body that meets and, and, and deals with the issues at hand, but it's not a back and forth way for people to engage with us. It is the least useful format for that kind of engagement. And it is the most frustrating format. And as a school committee member, you know me, I'll be like talking to people all the time. Um, it's, this is not that format. And I recognize, and as Ada said, there have to be ways in which we help, can help have communications with people and have collaboration with people that they don't feel we are ignoring them. School committee meetings are formal legislative body meetings. They are the least effective way for those things. And I apologize to everyone out there who feels that way. For we certainly don't not care. We care deeply actually about what happens. Um, and want the best for everyone and the best district we can possibly have. So that's why this important, this conversation about a permanent superintendent and the things moving forward are very important. And so I really appreciate everyone participating despite all the challenges that they're facing and all of the frustrations they're facing as well. And I look forward to moving the conversation forward and next steps. So thank you to everyone. And thank you for listening.
That's good. Um, anybody else have anything else before I go on to the superintendent's report? Okay, um, I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Depp.
Uh, thank you Chair Borel, and I see we have an item on there, but, uh, considering the climate, uh, if you don't mind, I would like to start with my presentation.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And while I'm switching to this, I want to, uh, assure some of the families. Um, uh, hold on one second, I'm going to share my screen. I want to share those, my comments to the folks. Am I able to share, Mike?
Yeah, I think, Mike, I don't think you made James, um, a presenter, um, as well, so you're gonna have to.
You should be able to share your screen, yep. Okay. Are you able to see my screen? You can? Okay, excuse me, let me get my presentation in. Hold on one second. I apologize, my emails are up. Excuse me. I have the presentation up, but I can't get to it. Oh, there it is. Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so, so, so first, oh, excuse me. So first of all, I want to thank all of the, uh, families that made their comments tonight. And, uh, my hope is at the end, I'm going to answer some of these, um, uh, questions that many folks have had. Uh, but I wanted to start off immediately by just giving people a little bit of background and context a- about this, uh, student learning time. And so if you could bear with me, and then I promised that I would answer, I wrote down as many of the questions I can, including some questions that I received prior to this evening's presentation. Um, first of all, I know that there's a lot of conversation about, uh, the Milton Public Schools or whether there's other districts not meeting Desi's, uh, guidelines. I want people to understand that these expectations were adopted by the Board of Elementary Secondary Education on December fifteenth. There was a vote. Uh, those, those, uh, expectations were sent out and publicized on Thursday, New Year's Eve during the vacation. So some of our faculty and staff haven't even had the opportunity to see that if they weren't paying attention to Desi's website. Uh, the new regulations go into effect on January nineteenth. So when people say we're not meeting it, I would like to change that to say we've got to work towards meeting that expectation. I agree with the expectations wholeheartedly, and I said it to many of the folks and especially some of the folks that spoke this evening. Um, I agree with the expectations, but you know what? We didn't have these expectations in June, July or August. So, and so that's what makes it difficult and it was left up to local control. And I do want to commend, uh, former superintendent Mary Gormley, because when there was so many unknowns, not just in Milton, but in the state and around the nation, Mary Gormley stepped up. The faculty and staff stepped up and they voted and moved forward with the, uh, hybrid model. It was voted on at a school committee meeting and blessed, embedded and blessed by Desi. So I want people to understand that. That's not being defensive. I want people to understand, uh, where that came from. These regulations are legally binding, uh, and non-compliance without a waiver. I started to do my own presentation, but I know that some people were concerned about transparency and trust. So I'm giving you the actual Desi website, uh, slides. The hybrid model, the student learning, uh, uh, time, the regulation, it's, it's thirty hours of instruction, uh, over the course of, uh, ten days. Excuse me, thirty-five hours minimum, and I want to emphasize minimum across all the grades. The hybrid model, uh, which I'm proud to say that there's a daily live in, uh, daily live check-in for all students is required. Many districts that people are talking, talking about and comparing us to, I want to remind you, some of those districts didn't even start school until October, some in November. Some chose to still be hybrid after Thanksgiving. And, and right now, there's about thirty-five plus districts that are still full remote until after January nineteenth. The Milton Public Schools are in session, so I want people to understand that. A grade level within a school will be considered as hybrid if all students have the opportunity to attend school in person. So again, some people might say, well, the remote students, we need to do this. It is your predominant, um, model. And our predominant model in the town of Milton, where we have eighty percent of the students hybrid and twenty percent of the students, approximately twenty percent students remote. I apologize for this thing that's in the middle of, uh, my screen. I can't seem to get that off of there, but hold on, let me just see something. There you go. Uh, the definition, um, learning that is directed of synchronous learning, learning is directed by a teacher and happens in real time with other students, such as live whole-class instruction or small group work. Uh, counts and sync, what counts as synchronous learning, live on classes, live streaming, small group instruction. I do want to go back to live on, on, online classes. Some districts are using the online platform. Former superintendent Gormley agreed and committed to the community that we will make sure that we have Milton Public School faculty and staff working directly with Milton Public School students. So we did not go to an online platform. Um, and then also small group instruction. What does not count, and I want to emphasize this for synchronous learning, is the office hours and other optional check-ins that doesn't count. And I know some people said, well, why are you trying to use, uh, your, uh, office hours to make up the Desi expectation? Again, the office hours were established back in August. The, the, the Desi guidance just came out, published, uh, December thirty-first and voted on, on December fifteenth. So I just wanted to let people know, we will be working on that and I will talk about that in a little bit. Oh, excuse. Um, the other thing that Desi is doing is, excuse me, Desi is offering waivers to districts. It doesn't, you know, in a high-level student engagement and asynchronous instruction, alternative education, operational constraints in the hybrid model, that could be facilities, that could be transportation, that could be a lot of different things. Those are things that you could do that. But I want to say to you, as the superintendent of Milton Public Schools, we are not seeking a waiver. We are working on ways in which we could, uh, meet or exceed those, uh, expectations and we will. I want to guarantee the public that. And so I just wanted to share that with you. There's the summary of elementary hybrid model, yes, there's three hours in the morning for, for, uh, all elementary students and then two hours in the afternoon of live, uh, streaming. Um, and then there are some students that may give some additional supports, whether it's the reading specialist or Spanish, um, in the English innovation pathways. So, but we couldn't count that time because not everybody in the school or everybody in that grade level, uh, receives those services. So I just wanted people to know, overall, on paper, and I would talk a little bit about that, on paper, according to our schedule that we submitted and gave to Desi, they came up with the thirty hours at, at the elementary, particularly grades one, grade four, and thirty-five hours at grades, uh, seven and grade ten. Same thing for the middle school model. I just want folks to know, the middle school model, there's four hours in the morning, students get in the building at seven fifty-five, they dismiss at twelve o'clock. I know we got the, uh, the check-in, the conference hours, which changes a little bit. That is something that we look or need to look at and modify, uh, and we will. Uh, but also in the afternoon, all students, the students in, in person and the students at home learning, uh, receive an hour and a half of live instruction every single day um, for the two weeks. And that's what makes up the thirty-five hours. And the same holds true for the high school. The same holds true for the high school. They're in seven fifteen in the morning, they dismiss at twelve o'clock. Again, they have those conference hours, um, and that, that changes it a little bit. That time, we understand because the check-in hours is not mandatory opportunity for students to check in with their teachers. We would need to look at how we, uh, make up that time, keep that, but make up that time. Then there was some concerns about, when I sent out the letter, uh, that I was not sharing, um, exactly what Desi was sharing and gave us. This is the top half of that one-page sheet. I split it in half. Uh, and I'll be more than happy to send it home. I will send a ho- home a copy of it in the email blast, so every parent can have it. I understand some people shared it already. But I want people to know that I did not come up with the average of fifteen minutes a day short, Desi did. And I, albeit short, we have plans to make that up and I'll talk about that in a, in a second. But it gives you a great, a, a, a little bit of a description of what they sent to me. But I want people to make the, pay attention to this piece right here in the middle where it says live instruction is this, as defined as the sum of in-person and remote synchronous instruction. So it's a combination of the two. This is the bottom half of that, the Desi SLT survey report. As you could see, grade one, roughly around thirty hours, grade four, four, uh, thirty hours, grade seven and ten, thirty-five. When you average that out, it comes out to thirty-three. Now, the reason why I bring this up, because there are a lot of districts that made it based on the average. If you notice how grade seven and ten, thirty-five brings up the grades one and four to bring up that average to thirty-three, that's what's happening in some districts. Now, I, I did share this with Bonnie Bates, who, who spoke this evening, and I do want to address this. When you look at that data, you want to go beyond that. When you look at the spreadsheet and you look at Needham, and I challenge anyone to look at Needham. Needham underneath him, it says that they're in school for eleven hours a week. Now that sounds like a lot. They're in school five and a half hours a day, not all time on learning, but they're in school every other week. So if you average that out, that's about five point five a week because they're one week on and one week off. Same thing with Stoughton. I, I know that was another one that came up. I know Stoughton's making it. I spoke with their superintendent as well. But Stoughton's making adjustments to their schedule. Stoughton went, Stoughton goes two days a week. If you're a cohort A, they go Monday, Tuesday. If you're cohort B, you go Thursday, Friday, then it's a remote, uh, Wednesday. And then, so if you're AB, then you're home three days a week. And so I, I, I've, I've said it in my communications, when we compare districts, we got to look at the uniqueness of it. Now, by me mentioning those districts, I'm not saying that they're bad. I'm saying that they're in the same position that Superintendent Gormley was in, their leadership was in, when we were making these plans. No one gave us the student learning time guidance. In fact, no one knew what to expect. And I've said this before on a couple of these meetings, even some of the parents that have spoken at previous meetings said, at least let us get into school for two to three weeks, so kids can meet their teachers. We're in school longer than that. We've had a few hiccups, but we're still moving forward. And so I don't want to make it seem like it's all roses. It's not. This is not an ideal situation. But again, I keep saying we're in the middle of a pandemic and I will talk a little bit about that as well. Some of the people said, well, why can't you, uh, why can't we have students eat in school? And Alessandra was one of the, uh, excuse me, I think it was one of the parents, and I'm sorry, I forget the name. Um, but there was a, um, a, a concern about, why don't you use the gyms? Maybe it was Mr. Perkins, use the gyms in the cafeterias for class. This is why it's hard for us to eat. Some of those spaces are utilized for classroom space at various times. Some people have emailed me upset because we might have kids in an auditorium doing remote learning. We're trying to utilize as much of the space as we can to accommodate the students that we have, to accommodate the students that we have. And I think it's very important. Some people emailed me and said, Mr. Jet, Westwood is in school, they, they're in school, why can't we? You know what? If you look at Westwood, very good community, kudos to them. They have five elementary schools in Westwood. One school, population of two hundred ninety, two hundred and seventy, two hundred and eighty, one ninety-five and two ten, five schools. Their largest school, two ninety-eight, is almost a hundred students less. A hundred students, a hundred and seventy students less than our smaller school, which is Tucker. And they, like Milton, have twenty percent or close to twenty percent of their population going remote, which brings those numbers down even more. So when they're able to do longer days and do that, they can spread out. And they too are utilizing their gyms, their cafeterias for classes. So those are the things that, and we're still looking at that, so I want to make that clear. Some people say we're not, uh, why aren't we doing three feet? If Desi says three feet is okay. I want to remind folks, nowhere in society is the, uh, distance three feet. I get that Desi said it, but the actual language is the distance of six feet is preferred whenever feasible, but the minimum is acceptable. Keep in mind, when these plans were developed, no one knew what to expect. Some of our faculty and staff have never even stepped in the building since March thirteenth, the day that we left. So these were some of the things to make sure that people had a safe working environment, a safe working environment to walk in respecting and going to the guidance, the health guidance. And people keep sharing with me saying, Desi says full in school. Even with this new guidance that was published on December thirty-first, they're not saying those schools that are remote, go to remote. They're saying if you're remote, you at least need to do forty hours over the course of two weeks. If you're in hybrid, you do a minimum of thirty-five hours over two weeks. So I want to make that clear. And then I also need to say this because it's very important. I get that people are frustrated. I get people want more in person. But when we say kids are not in building, in the building, they're not learning, we need to be careful of that because we do have twenty percent of our population who chose remote and their kids are learning. Their kids are learning. Many of us are working remotely in some cases. That doesn't mean we're not doing our job. I get that it's hard and I would talk about some of the plans that we have. Why aren't we negotiating the MOA for more in-person time? First of all, I want to be clear, the Milton Educations Association did not, did not develop nor vote on a model. The subsequent to the school committee's vote and the proposal by Mary Gormley, they did impact bargaining. What does this mean for my job? Do we make sure that we have the proper PPEs? We have the proper distances? That's what the, uh, MEA did. In every opportunity I get, folks, I'm going to continue to say it and, and I sincerely mean it because I've worked with these individuals in multiple different capacities. You have some great dedicated teachers in the town of Milton who want to work just as much as we see the passion and the dedication of you as family members. Um, and that's what made Milton Public Schools a great place, not a superintendent. It's the students, it's the faculty, it's the staff, and this is support that we get from the community. And I don't see that changing. I get that people are frustrated, but we will work on that. Why are connection times, office hours and advisories accounted to me to? Again, I just spoke to that. They will not count it because we didn't know that was going to be something that they were going to come up with. So we didn't put that into. So we didn't put that in to try to meet the Desi standards. I want to make sure people understand that. Why is my child dismissed from online classes ten, fifteen minutes on a regular basis? Well, first of all, if your child is dismissed ten to fifteen minutes on a regular basis, I'm asking you to speak to the teacher. That should not be the, that should not be the case. But I do want to point out, there's a difference between students being officially dismissed. And teachers asking students to work asynchronously, especially if a student's in a remote and they have to conduct themselves and do a quiz. They might have to do a quiz, or if they're asked to do reading, it is very difficult for a teacher to sit and just monitor students while they're reading a book and everyone's with their head down. So I want people to understand that, but I would encourage you, if there's a concern about that, definitely speak to the teacher first, give them that courtesy, because they might be able to provide some clarification. And then if you're not happy, then you have that conversation with the building principal, and I'm sure we'd be more than willing to help you. Why did the district switch from all-day hybrid to half-day hybrid in August? Mary Gormley, the return to school task force, came up with a full-day plan. Mary retired and James Jet switched the model. Now typically, I wouldn't put that in there, but I do want to put that in there. Because I do think it's very important. I can't speak, nor do I want people to criticize someone who's not able to be here to defend themselves. Because I think Mary Gormley did the best she could as a many different superintendents across the Commonwealth with the many unknowns. And with the little bit of information and guidance that we had. So I need to say that out loud. But I also want to point out that I was appointed, very fortunate, very honored. To be appointed on Wednesday night, August twenty-sixth, and my first day was Thursday morning, the twenty-seventh. That plan was already voted on, sent in. I did not change anything. Actually, I corrected. We did make some changes. We added the live streaming. We added our high-need students and our sub-separate programs on November thirtieth. And I mentioned that to the public on November second, excuse me, November fourth, at a school committee meeting. I said, that was our date that we're going to do that. We did it. We did that. And they're in full day, and they're getting that experience. And one of the parents talked about compensatory services. I got to tell you, Director of People Personnel, Suma Sully meets with the principal, she's talking about that. We're looking at ways that we could continue to support our students, and that is something on our, that that have been on our mind. And we will continue to have that, and we'll continue to plan for it to make sure that we cover that. Based on what we know now, would it be, would there be time that we could implement more time in school? If you go back to December, Wednesday, December second, I said that, and I gave out three optional plans. I said there were some barriers that we needed to work on. What I'm about to say to school committee members don't even know right now. But I want to let you know, I said that we were going to work on it, but I've been speaking with town administrator, Mike Dennehy. Amy Dexter, who is the new assistant superintendent of business, and Lisa over at Town Hall. Speaking about this COVID money, and there's a strong possibility that there may be some extras. We also spoke with the bus company, and I said before, that was a challenge. The bus company came down from four hundred dollars a day to two hundred and sixty. We have a joint finance committee meeting tomorrow, which I spoke with Mike Dennehy, and he said it was okay to mention because this is what we're doing in these tough days, collaborating. That is something we're going to talk about, and that may be something that we would have to explore enhancing our our plan. So there's no necessary fundraising efforts on the parents' part. There's no increased fees possibly for those buses. But this is something we had to do. But again, I've always said. I agree that we need to have more time with our students. We just disagreed on the timing. We just disagreed on the timing because we have to plan for that. People forget. The return to school task force, a hundred and forty people, seventy-seven faculty, staff, administrators, teachers, custodians. And sixty-three parents and guardians were on that from May twenty-first until early August. And secondly, I did not disband that. The whole goal was to do that that group meet to reopen school, which we did. That's what happened. I did not disband that, and I just not, I did not disband the health committee. What we did was establish a COVID metric advisory team. But that was done a week or two into the academic year. A week or two into the academic year, so I think it was very important for me to clear that up. What do you see as the next steps? More, oh, excuse me, I apologize. What do you see as the next steps? Make a time before, I can't even see that now because I have this in a way. I do apologize, folks. I don't know why that's there. Ah, great. Excuse me. Give me one second. I do apologize. Tough part about COVID. What does the next steps, what are the, what are the next steps for more in-person learning look like? We're looking at making up the time before November, but that's the immediate one by November nineteenth. And then we're looking at a plan to bring people back in person. And when people say, why aren't you thinking about that? I mean, why aren't you doing it sooner? As you can imagine, the cases have gone up. So the folks that say, why don't you listen to the healthcare professionals? Everybody predicted that December, January, and February are going to be the worst months in. Public health history of this nation. Couple with that they picked, they predicted a surge right after Thanksgiving, which happened, and they predict a surge now. And so I think that's very, very important. Are we truly at the bottom five percent? I can't truly say that because there's so many other factors that play into the data that was reported out there by Desi. Again, I think you got to look at enrollment, you got to look at space, you got to look at a number of combinations. And then, as the example I gave about Needham, you got to look at their models specifically. And quite frankly, we have a lot to do in the town of Milton. That I don't have that time to look at all of these other districts' models and really pick them apart. But I do want to caution people, and I get people are frustrated. But we can't go to social media all the time and take what's posted on social media and think it's in the proper context. Now, with all due respect to the folks that are doing that. I appreciate your enthusiasm. I appreciate your commitment, your passion, and your desire to want more. But I just caution people because it does not help. A situation where people are already frustrated and quite frankly angry about this situation. And that's not my goal. That's not the goal of the faculty or staff to make that any harder for anyone. But the bottom line is we need to make up a minimum of five hours at the elementary level. We need to make up a little time in terms of those conference hours at the high school and the middle school. And that's what the, that's where the average of fifteen minutes a day. Can older students stream in on a regular basis instead of starting their school day at one o'clock? That is another thing that we're exploring. And the reason why I say that, and I think it's a perfect time that I share this with parents. People want to teach, but in want to do live because they know it's the right thing to do. But when parents and guardians are taking pictures or recording things or jumping into the screen while people are teaching. Those things are the type of things that make it bad for everyone, because then people feel a little nervous about that. So I ask people to really adhere to the technology and online policy that we sent out, because I think it's very, very important. Why aren't we reinstating the return to schools task force? Again, that's a hundred and forty-something people to return to task force. Remember, we are now in school. We're now in school where we have kids in during the day. We have meetings during the day, and we also have meetings, school committee, finance committee, all of these other meetings. That weren't necessarily taking place in the summer where we met or were able to meet on a more regular basis. And then our teachers who evolved or staff that were involved on that, they're involved in planning, they're involved in correcting papers. So it's hard to do that type of a meeting again. But I will summons a a a small group of people, especially a few parents from the elementary level. And I might have a sit-down with them, whether it's through the P T O or some other, when we start talking about these plans and and let them vet. But I want to make it clear, any parent that participates in that is for their feedback. They don't make the decision. So when something happens, we shouldn't criticize those people who are volunteering their time. Giving it and committing to the Milton Public Schools in an attempt to try to make things better. So I think that's important. And I always say to folks, remember. How we conduct ourselves publicly. Our younger students are looking at us. We are role models, whether we want to be or not, we are role models, and I just think that we need to be very careful in the language that we use. I don't mind the disagreement. I don't mind the emails, and I try my best to respond to every single email, and I'm trying my best to respond to these questions. But when they come in in abundance and they're repetitive, it's very difficult. For me to make that change because it takes a while, it takes a process, as I just talked about, one option with the buses. Why is it Milton P S more transparent with the numbers of cases in in if there's a spread in school? I don't know what to say about that, but we report our numbers to Desi every week, every week. Now, sometimes that doesn't get in. I don't have a problem. Anyone that wants to challenge me on that or ask or. I send that to them. Matter of fact, I just sent it to them today. We send it to them today. And for those who want to know, I also said I put it in my, the weekly blog. But I just reported today, we had six staff members and we have fifteen students. Not close contact, but tested positive. That's just this week alone, who's out. So I want people to understand that, and that that's what was submitted to Desi. And that's what it. You didn't get an email that went home to say we're closing schools. Why? Because as I always stated, when it has a negative impact on our staffing, and we're not able to put people in front of your children in the hybrid model. That's when we have to shut down a school or multiple schools. And so people are looking at Milton's numbers, which were high yesterday. I didn't look at them yet today. Don't just look at Milton's numbers because we have a vast majority of faculty and staff that don't live in Milton, who also have family members. Who are also doing, who also have their own circles. And so that's why I think it's important for us to put it out there. And then. Before I I go to the next slide, when people say we don't care not education, I want people to understand. We have faculty and staff that work in the Milton Public Schools who have kids, who in other districts. Who are for more in, less in-time person. I want people to know, even when we go remote, if we don't have the staffing for people to come in, our faculty and staff are coming to the buildings. And they're sometimes teaching from there, unless of course they have to quarantine, unless of course something else is going on, or they are positive case. So I need people to understand it, the Milton Public School faculty and staff administration are committed to trying to do our best. But this is not an easy task for anyone. And if it was that easy, Desi would have came out with more. Of these expectations very early on, in June, July, and August. For those who don't know, we have expectations of nine ninety of structured learning time during a regular year. We got a requirement of a hundred and eighty days. We didn't get that this past summer. So I think that's the piece I want people to look at. And then finally, when people say, why aren't we in? I just shared with you there about thirty, more than thirty-five districts that are currently remote until either the eleventh or the nineteenth. Some of those have more time on learning. I think some people may have pointed out the Milton, but they're not in school. And they weren't in school the week after Thanksgiving. But when people ask, if you look at this graph, the highest number of. Top three, and quite frankly, you could extend it down to the top four. That's our entire school population. One hundred percent of our students in that bracket of zero to nineteen. That is creeping up. And I get it, we only go by, and one of the biggest things on the data metrics that we point out, we talk about cases per one hundred thousand. We talk about state positivity rate. We talk about the age and stuff like that, but the biggest one, and many parents that I emailed, I always highlighted in red, how it impacts our district. Again, I emphasize, if we don't have the people to put in front of the kids, we cannot open up safely because we cannot combine classes and violate that. And then, and 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 finally, I say to every single parent out there who've emailed me. Whether you're in opposition of the current plan. Or you're in favor of it. I still know, and I, when I say in favor of it. It's not that you are happy with it, but you understand it. It's a challenge. I want to, I empathize and sympathize with you because I can't, I know it's not easy. It's not easy for any of us. It's not easy for me to get, sit here before you and tell you that. But we have a plan to meet the two nineteen. We're working on that. We have a meeting tomorrow morning. And then we'll talk publicly. I did say it to December second and to December eighteenth, that I was hoping to make the announcement. The Wednesday after the M L K weekend, and partly because of the two weeks that everyone says to be concerned about after the holidays. But also knowing it was a vacation, there was some things that still needed to be worked out. We will present that. My hope is sometime in February, early February, we could put together a plan that hopefully people. People are satisfied with, or at least understanding with. So I just wanted to let you know. And my hope tomorrow, we have some official answers for you at that meeting. So I know there was a lot of questions, and I hope I answered, I hope I answered some of them. But again, I can't emphasize enough, some of the districts on that list, that may have more in-person time for us, didn't start until October. Maybe November. Some went remote after Thanksgiving. Some are still remote now. So I I I share that with you, not as an excuse, but to let you know that I hear you. I do my best to respond as quickly as possible, but please know during the day, especially where we have limited time with the students in the building. My number one focus is working with faculty and staff and the students that are in the building at that time. And then the other time, we're still working on it. So thank you very much. And I will be putting some more frequently asked, frequently asked questions in tomorrow's blog and hopefully providing some answers. And for those who don't know me typically, this will be a conversation in an auditorium. As a principal, I've done that at the high school and the middle school, and I would do that, but obviously we can't do that right now. So that takes the. That takes a little bit out of it. When you're reading stuff through email, you don't hear the tone. That, you know what I mean, the fluency and the motion's not there, and sometimes things could be taken out of context. And and my final statement is, in my response to anybody, if you felt offended, or if you felt that you weren't heard, I apologize, but you are heard. The fact that you're getting a response, you are being heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jet. So I didn't know if any of the school committee members have any. Questions for Superintendent Jet about any of the stuff that he reported out on. Betty.
James, can can I just go over the whole issue of lunch that people are bringing up a lot? And my understanding when the decision was made that we were gonna. Not include having lunch in school was because of a space issue. And I I I just want to ask you to reiterate that again, because I know that. There's, they haven't changed, as far as I can tell, and I was asking some questions today from some medical people that I talked to. That they haven't changed their thinking about six feet of distance in terms of taking your mask off and eating lunch. And my understanding is that we did not have that kind of space when they measured classrooms to be able to do lunch in classrooms. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, yes and no.
Okay.
The reality is, if kids are in school in the in the classes, and the assumption is they're six feet apart. That they, they should be able to eat six feet apart with their mask off. But we all know, and I think I said this before, in theory, if if everyone's sitting at home. Ideal situation, think that kids should just sit in a seat like this, for six hours, six and a half hours a day. Hands folded without moving and staying six feet apart. That's not an ideal learning environment for younger children. So what we were saying, it was very difficult. We couldn't do it in the cafeterias in some cases. Half of the cafeteria at the high school is used for classes. Some of the cafeteria at the cap, at the Pierce Middle School, used for classes. Cafeteria at the Tucker is very small and very tight. You know, the the gym at the Tucker is used for the medical waiting room because you didn't have any space. The gym at the Glover is used for storage in some of those cases because we have nowhere to to put some of the furniture. That we had to remove without dropping it off or stuff like that. Excuse me for a second. So those are some of the challenges that we have, but that's something that's being explored. You know, and we continue to explore it. But I also, I think I said it at the last meeting, when people said you're not changing. If we started school on the sixteenth, and we go to November, kids only had about fifteen, sixteen days. A piece in that hybrid model to get accustomed to what we, what was new to everybody. So it was an adjustment.
Anyone else? A member of heart.
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Jet, for answering the many questions that the community had. And for trying to clear, to clear up some of the miscommunications. You know, I would like to address that I understand that Desi put out that website. With a lot of information for parents without a lot of context. And I think that that's a really important conversation. I know people don't want to hear that, but that's the truth. Desi asks people questions, and they ask them in November, and it's now January fourth, or fifth or sixth, sorry. And without any context. So if you're a scientist out there in the world and you're thinking about how you present data to people. They just made the graphs with the colors that you can click on and you can hover, and you can compare districts, and you can, you can see. You can look at what happens and what's happening where and everything else. But you really get into the weeds of what's important to understand about what that looks like in. But to really get into the weeds of what's important to understand about what that looks like in actual implementation is not available on that website. It's only available to superintendents who now have to call each other and spend a lot of time trying to understand what the website said. That's my perspective. My perspective, Desi, could have been a lot more helpful overall in general by supporting districts in moving into more in, you know, life, live teaching and not putting out a website with a lot of information that is not in context. It is not in context. It's comparing different things. And if you're a scientist out there, you know, that's not how you do it. You have a control group, you have other things, you figure it out. You don't just throw it out there and say, here you go, good luck with that. To make people so upset and so mad that we're doing things so wrong, or their district is doing things so wrong, without a context. So that's my first comment about the Desi website. Out of context, nothing really to compare it to, leaving people to think that it's clear when it's not clear. And number two, I'd like to just point out that if you ask any, like, if you ask any educator who's actually doing in-person teaching, every day, all the time, let's say, or in a hybrid model or whatever, that we would get to January 6th and still be a lot of time in person, I don't think they would have believed that. Because back in the, the late summer and in the fall, most people were thinking, even those districts that were going to be hybrid in person, most people were thinking, we'll be lucky if we make it to Halloween. We'll be lucky if we make it to Thanksgiving. We'll be lucky. But we did make it and it's not perfect and it's an ideal, and we all want more in-person learning. But that is the thought process that was the impetus for having in-person learning. How long are we really going to make it? We didn't know. Yes, the science is changing. Yes, the science is evolving. Yes, there's a vaccine. And all of that's going to impact our ability to have more in-person learning. But if you ask any educator, including myself, did I think we would really get there? I would not have believed you. And I'm grateful for every minute and all the hard work that people are doing to keep us there, but I know that it's not easy. There was an article yesterday that, that I, that I read about no matter how hard people are trying to stay open, the lack of staff, the lack of substitutes, and the constant need to fill in is impacting in-person learning across the country. That's not getting as much news or as much attention as everything else is. But in the reality of teaching day to day, there are sometimes not enough people. And that's the truth. That's the reality of teaching in a pandemic. I wish we could all go back to school tomorrow in person, the way we used to be. That would be my biggest wish. But I just, I, I, that website by Desi upset parents so much. When I feel like there was so much of it that was out of context and Desi could have done a different job to help people understand it. And I thank you, Mr. Jett, for trying to explain it to all of us. It's very, it's very sort of, I don't even know the word. I don't even have a word for it, but I just, that, that I'm, I'm upset with how much it upset parents without real clarity, accuracy, and a way for parents to put it in context.
So if, if I could just add that, I don't disagree with the Desi guidance. I think it's good. I think it's needed for some continuity and consistency across the Commonwealth. The only thing I, I think, and this is just my opinion, and people might say, who cares what, James? As opposed to saying schools did not need it, why don't you say schools need to work towards this? As opposed to that, because then I think it takes this thing off of it. Again, if this was guidance that was done in the summer, and then the second thing I want people to understand, this has been a challenging year. And some people have asked, well, why is my, the teacher at home and my child is in the auditorium or the cafeteria or a classroom and the teacher's streaming in? Well, if a teacher is positive but healthy enough, because some people are positive who are asymptomatic, or if the teacher is home because they are close contact, that teacher's zooming in. And with, it's costing us additional money to have another person sit in and supervise them. And I think you, you hit the nail on the head, Margaret, when you said, it's very difficult to get subs on a, on a last minute notice. I, I mean, I just shared with you today, we're in school three days. That's how many people, 21 people, six staff, 15 students. And so I want people to understand that. And then the people say, well, you got COVID money, what do you do with the COVID money? I just want to explain that a little bit. COVID money was supposed to be spent by municipalities, whether it was the town or the district by December 30th. So towns are scrambling. You couldn't hire people because you didn't know if you're going to have the money after January to continue with them. You couldn't hire them long-term, I should say, with some of that money. Second of all, at the time, we couldn't do buses because the money that you use had to be used for services already rented. So we couldn't stockp, we couldn't do something, pay for it now for the buses for the remainder of the year. So that was another challenge. And then trying to get people who come in to a school environment under the circumstances with very little training, it's, it's hard. In a lot of districts in, in that challenge, uh, for substituting. So I just want, and then just, I think it was December 27th or December 28th, we were notified that the, because the, the COVID money could extend a little bit until the next school year. So most people already exhausted it because it was one of those things, you either use it or you lose it. So those are the challenges that I think that the, the, the community may not necessarily be aware of that, that not only Milton, a lot of districts are, are facing. So that was another piece that I just wanted to share with folks.
And I agree, Mr. Jett, that the, that the, um, the guidelines, the parameters, the expectations, those are all good things. Desi should have been helping us in those ways all along. I'm just saying that you're 100% right, that the power of yet, and we have discussed multiple times, we're not there yet, but we will be, is really an important place to keep at the center. And I think that that was what was missing. The context of, this is what we see now, this is the expectations we've set forward, and these are the ways that we're helping districts, or districts are, are working towards that. And that was the piece missing from the context of that website.
Um, uh, James, I want, so I want to ask you for clarity too. So I know that you said that you are fine tuning, um, with your leadership team, your principals, directors, all the staff, et cetera. And so today's the 6th, so you're going to be cascading out what the additional, um, learning time is going to be as of the 19th. And I think in your slide, you said November 19th, but you meant, I think you meant January 19th, right? It was November, okay. So, so, so you should be, you should be cascading out those changes, uh, by the end of this week or Monday or Tuesday of next, is, you know, of what, of what that change will be on the 19th? Is that correct?
Uh, not the end of this week, because in fairness, I have to have a conversation with the faculty and staff who may not have suggested this. Again, this was published on December 31st.
Right, right.
Um, while people were on vacation, and then we come back to Monday. And our immediate situation was making sure that we had the coverage for students to arrive on Monday. So we have an opportunity, in fairness, I wouldn't, I haven't had a dialogue with the entire faculty and staff, which I, I plan to host a, a meeting and talk to them about some, some of these things as well. But yes.
So, so then, so you, so then probably like next week on the 11th, the week of the 11th then, yes?
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, and then whatever, whatever that change will be that will happen, that will start the week of the, yeah, um, after MLK, Monday on the 19th. Um, so, so then, so then, um, additional, it's the additional, um, learning in the hybrid model, um, that, that is your, 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 um, goal date to start, that would be in February. And that you should maybe be able to like, um, cascade that out at that time. Like, are you looking at the first week of February and then starting the following week? Or what does your timeline look for that? If you can just.
Very good question. Whatever plan is posted up, it is, is going to be contingent upon the health metrics where we are as a cohort. In the school community. So absolutely, ideally, it would be something that we could look forward to making some modifications by early February. But, and I would be clear to, uh, Weston, uh, Weston's comments, uh, Weston Element Branch, who said, tell us exactly what it is. I will put what those things are in that communication so parents would know, and it'd be on our website as well.
All right. So, so just so, just for clarity, so it should be, so the, so the week of the 11th will be the communication with clarity of what will, what change will be made the week of the 19th. And then, and then the first week of, so again, I know you, you still need to, again, get, um, all the clarifications with this, with the staff in place. But would you be looking for the additional in-person learning increase in hybrid, the first week in February? Um, what I'm saying, the virus can change, but the goal would be that you would start that the first week in February? Or would you announce what it is the first week in February and then, um, put it into action the following week? Could you speak to that?
I would love to say sometime in February, but I can't share this. So just like I said to you, today was a new development. Uh, Amy Dexter spent the better half of this morning over at Town Hall. She was all, all on the phone with them yesterday. That is a new development that came out. So we like to tweak that, and I think that's a possibility. Uh, so I want people to understand there's three plans. One, if, I want people to notice, if we go a full day, if we go a full day, somehow we make it a full day, kids will be in school every other day. That's one thing. They would lose that other day, or they'd be streaming live for six hours on the off day. So they, you know what I mean? Then, or if there's a possibility at the elementary level that we'd extend that time, we extend time in school, maybe four hours, maybe five hours, those are some of the options. Or we do the five, five-day in model where Cohort A goes in the morning, five days, and Cohort B, uh, comes in the afternoon. That's where the buses come into play. In order to do that, we needed an additional bus run. So those are some of the options that we still need to tweak out a little bit, but we are very, we could be very close with some proposals that are put out there with a designated timeline. So early February, Monday, February 1st, that's a Monday. I, I hope that would be the case in the ideal situation, yes.
Okay. Dr. Donahue?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. So, um, I, yeah, let me, let me just take a moment and we can reflect here. And I, I want to thank the Chair and I want to thank the Superintendent for all the hard work they have done, um, today. The, the last 10 months have been very difficult for a lot of people, for a lot of different reasons. And I think on a day where we saw the flag of the sworn enemies of the Republic in our Capitol, for the first time since the Napoleonic Wars, I, I want to, I want to approach this from a, a, a positive and a collaborative perspective. So with that, I, I would like to thank the administration for all the hard work they've been doing. I, I want to focus on the, as you said, some of these, the plans that you've been talking about. So it's from, from what, from what I've been able to understand, there are three-ish plans, at least at the elementary level, in terms of adding additional time into the day. One of the plans is if we extend the day completely, kids eat in school, kids are in school all day. So they'll be in school one day and out of school the next day, in school one day, out of school the next day. And the deficit there is that they would lose that everyday connectivity with their teacher. There's another plan that's more expensive that would, would be, um, require more buses and, and add an additional bus run. And you'd have a half day in the morning and a half day in the afternoon. And to an extent, you would, you would maintain that, um, everyday connection with, with your teachers. But it, as I said, it's, it's, it's more expensive and it's, it's frankly more logistically trying. And then there's a, another option, which is to sort of try and extend that, that morning period where they're in school, maybe eat lunch, maybe not, but instead of doing the three hours, maybe do four hours or something like that. And, and then, and then do some, some afternoon synchronous work. I, I think, and please correct me if I've misstated those. I think those are laudable plans. I think a lot of them have, there are, there's a lot of complexity to those. And I, I, you are correct in your approach that this format here is not the format to decide which of those plans is, is the best, most optimal. That, that is a conversation for you and your leadership team with the educators who do this professionally, and then with the, with our financial people to try and find, find funds to manage that. So I, I applaud you for doing that. I also applaud you for opening up the conversation in terms of how to, how to better generalize that, that plan to the middle school and high school levels. And what that means for their afternoon, um, uh, online time, where as a, as a group, you have the, an entire period coming in and, and doing, um, uh, work together as opposed to just the A cohort or the B cohort in the morning. I, I'd like to thank you for the work that you've done. I, I wish that it were faster. As, as I've said before, I have four kids and they're all elementary or younger. And, and I, I live this and I, I recognize the pain that people are in, but I also recognize the, all of the behind the scene logistics that we, that you are going through. And I'd like to say thank you for, for all of this hard, the hard work that you have done.
Um, okay. So, oh, I'm sorry, Ada.
Yes, thank you. Um, thanks, Mr. Jett, for, for your presentation. A number of comments. Um, I was glad to see your response to the concerns that we've heard from some parents about their children being dismissed from class after a couple of minutes or a few minutes, and then just them playing on video games or whatever, rather than being in class. That I had their, I was concerned about that scenario too. And, and I'm glad that you, um, suggest that folks be in touch with their children's teacher and/or their principal to understand what's going on, because I, I've heard it more than once and I share their concern. Um, I think we, we need to be clear about when kids are in school, um, in synchronous learning and, and when they're not. Um, so I was, I was pleased with your recommendation on that for parents to be in touch with teachers and principals about that concern.
And I think it's, Ada, before you go on, because I can't validate that, to say it's accurate. I think it's important, any parent that has a concern about something involving their teacher, their classroom, the instruction, they should give the teacher the courtesy of that conversation because I think sometimes it could clear it up. And, and as opposed to letting it go and then waiting for that, you can save yourself the frustration and the teacher might be able to help. Uh, so I just want, I, I do need to say that I have no validation of that, but I also want to make sure that people know the, the, the protocol, the steps they could take to kind of get the answers.
Exactly, exactly. Well, yeah, I, I, I also, I, and I wasn't there, so I don't know what, what happened. But, you know, parents should, should be in touch with, with, um, the teachers and principals. Um, I, I thought I heard you talk about the possibility of vetting plans for increased time in school with parents. And I'm wondering what your thoughts are about that. I think it would be really good if, if once you, um, have vetted, um, and figured out what, um, extended, um, learning time plan would work for Milton Public Schools with, with your leadership team and staff, that if, you know, before it's presented as a final decision that it, that is vetted with, with parents, that there might be an opportunity for you to present it to parents, to give you feedback. Um, and I didn't know if that's what you had in mind or, or what you were thinking. Obviously, time is short before the beginning of February, but I would think it'd be a really good thing if, if we were able to do that.
So thank you for that comment, but I also think that we also have some of those mechanisms already in place with site councils, diversity group, PTOs, and I would run the gamut and go through those avenues. Um, because I, I, I agree with you, time is of the essence, and I would definitely have no problems. When I meet with the PTO presidents, I give them the updates. Um, I share with them, you know, some of the challenges we have and some of the goals that we want to do. And I could do that, uh, via this, uh, the site councils, the diversity groups. So I do think that there are vehicles that are in place.
Well, as we see, we have a very, very engaged, uh, community right now. You know, when we saw twenty-two hundred responses to our superintendent's survey and the number of people that are on our meetings, clearly people have ideas and, and want to be able to share their ideas. So if there's a way to be able to hear those ideas in response to plans while they're being made, I think it could make our plans stronger and, and help people understand what's behind the plans. So, but it, it's, you know, I, I, I hear you in terms of the, the structure of, of the different PTOs and, and site councils and the like. And I think then if, if we go that route for vetting plans, that we would be sure to let other parents know how we're doing that so that they can be in touch with their site councils or their PTOs, if they have questions or want to know what's going on. And, and then, now, I, I just had to respond myself about the Return to School Task Force and when it was disbanded, having been co-chair of that group. It was my understanding when I agreed to step into that position, and I think it was the understanding of my co-chair and, and with the rest of our team, that it was a group that was created to come up with a plan for how to return to school, that there was no assumption that this group would continue beyond return to school, that, that once our plan had been approved by the school committee and submitted and approved by the Department of Education, our mission had been accomplished, and everyone needed to, as you said, go, go on to their day jobs, you know, with school in session and, and everything else that, that everyone is involved in. So I, I just want to be sure that people understand that, that that was, that was always all, that was intended of that task force, and there was nothing, nothing more than that. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ada, I, I just, I just want to say to, to Ada's point that, from what Jane's response is, that, you know, I hear you, you know, about wanting to vet, but I, I, I'm just more concerned about the timeline, and it's, you know, January sixth, and, and with all due respect to twenty-eight hundred families and, you know, forty-five hundred children, like, of the three plans that were just mentioned tonight, there's no way we're going to get, you know, all families to be like, this is the one. And even, even to do this big vetting of, well, this is the most popular, I, I, that, you know, Margaret just did that massive survey, like, the results, and you did, you know, you chaired Return to School. I mean, as Dr. Donahue said, there, you know, they're all three, you know, solid choices, and I'd just rather, they get, you know, they, one is chosen, because that's, because Superintendent Jett and his leadership team felt this is the best one, that they could execute across all the campuses, you know, staff and principals are on board with. But I just, I, I definitely fear with a massive vetting, we'll be vetting forever and not move the needle forward. So that's just how, what I would feel about that. So I would rather, same thing, like, if, if Superintendent Jett meets with, you know, they, he meets with PTO leads across all schools anyway, and site councils, but, you know, that's just my two cents on that too, but I get it, but I have a concern about time. All right, I'm going to move on to finance. Oh, actually, Superintendent Jett, I, I think this is yours, but maybe I, I don't know, just wanted to take it there, there's the, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year calendar was attached in our materials, and we need to vote on that for when the start date is. So, has everyone had a chance to take a look at that, have any questions on it or anything? If not, I'm just going to make a recommendation to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year as, as noted in our files.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Please raise your hand. Okay, unanimous?
Sheila, can I just ask a really quick question before we move off of the superintendent's report?
Yep.
Okay, so we started the meeting tonight, and you, you, you read a statement about what's happening at the Capitol today and in the country. And if Mr. Jett and Dr. Spalding could address the committee and also the community about how are we, how are we supporting teachers for tomorrow and for the days to come? Like, what, so, because I think that there's probably, myself included, thinking about tomorrow and what, what little kids have, going to have heard tonight when they went home, and now our whole community, what was, what's happening in our Capitol, the issues that are being raised as a result of what's happened today, going all the way back to the protests that happened over the summer, and all of the Black Lives Matter movement, Black Lives Matter movement, and all of that. I just want us to address the community about how are we supporting teachers so that they feel supported, and if they come into a, a situation tomorrow with a lot of questions from students and a lot of concerns, what are they going to do? How are they going to, who are they going to reach out to? What are we going to do to support our, our, our staff and our students during this, this, and I'm going to use one of my band words, unprecedented times?
So, I think, go ahead, Dr. Spalding.
So, thank you very much. And, and we are, at this very moment, our new Senior Director for Educational Equity, Somali, is gathering some resources and putting together some thoughts to be able to share at, at some point. We're, we're trying to figure out scheduling of it, but obviously as soon as possible, tomorrow morning, at some point with staff, so that they can hear from her and see her. And, and there are sort of two, two immediate chunks. One would be resources to make sure that there is a shared understanding of what actually is happening at the Capitol Building. You know, I, I would like to think that everyone, anyone is, is aware and, and understanding of what's happening and, and the implications for that and, and all of that. And then the other piece is giving, giving both some written resources as well as her describing and sharing some of her expertise in terms of how to, how to manage and support conversations and giving students the opportunity to have those conversations and, and really supporting teachers and, and building, or may I say rebuilding the trust and, and feeling as if those conversations, and, and we absolutely encourage those conversations, want to support those conversations, and we want to make sure we make that message really loud and clear and supportive to our teachers as well. That's really important. So those, those pieces are, are in the works. And once this meeting wraps up, no pressure, we'll be getting on the phone actually with, with Somali, who, like I said, is literally in this moment doing that work. So, so thank you so much. So I, I don't know if you wanted to add to that, and I know Mr. Jett has actually already authored a communication out to staff, so I don't know if you want to add anything else to that.
No, thank you, Dr. Spalding. So yes, unfortunately, I wasn't even aware of what happened until late la, well, late last night, late this evening, but as soon as I made it home and realized and saw what was playing out, I did send a communication to, to all of faculty and staff. It's from the National Association of School Psychologists on how to talk to and deal with students and support them developmentally, you know, in regards to violence and, and things like that to happen. But also, you know, reaffirming and, and talking to them about safety, because sometimes when things like that happen, people feel very compromised. Quite frankly, I, I shared with the teachers that we will revisit our own safety and security protocols as well, because even as adults, coupled with some of the stuff that, you know, we're all going through, people were, people are frustrated. And, and teachers want to know that they're going to be in a safe environment, students want to know that they're going to be in a safe environment. So I just prepared all teachers, whether they are remote or in hybrid, to expect that some students are going to talk about this issue, and allow them that opportunity to really talk about their feelings, their anxieties, their fears, or just to help them navigate and bring some clarity to what's going on. So it's a tough situation, but yeah, hard off the press, and this is the, this is the other downtime, downside. If this was a regular, normal year, we would be calling staff in early in the morning, having a conversation auditorium, bring people, give them opportunity to grieve, because not everybody is skilled at going up and talking about what's going on in, in the nation's capital. So my hope is, those are some of the tips, and as Dr. Spalding said, we'll continue to do that, but this is all happening in real lifetime, and we're on a school committee meeting, and as we should be, communicating with the folks, but we're going to deal with that as well.
No, I appreciate, I'm sorry, I appreciate that. I just think it's important, like, I just know that it's, it's stirring up a lot. It's, it's, it's unfathomable in some ways, right, what's, what's happening? And, and I want, I, I hope that teachers can feel like they, they know where to go, and now we have Somali to help. And I know that this is a long-term process about having conversations about how you have difficult and conversations in real time as things are unfolding. And so I really appreciate that, knowing the work that's going on, and know that teachers know they have resources they can reach out to, as they, as always have, but now they have additional resources as well.
And Margaret, I should point out, my communication with faculty and staff, I did share with them, I will be sending the same cheat sheet sort of, and I'm sure Somali might come up with some of her own to share with parents and guardians, because they too might need a, some of that support to have that dialogue with their children. So, absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to Finance Subcommittee, turning it over to Dr. Craighead.
Okay, so I only have two things for tonight. One is the fiscal year twenty-two budget request, and we need to vote on it, because we have only voted on our Tier One request. So to remind anyone else who's viewing this, we have, we have voted on and presented to the Full Warrant Committee our Tier One request. I'm going to share my screen for a moment, just so everybody can. There we go. I think this is it. I have so many things. Yes, there we go. Can everybody see that? Yes, okay. So we, in our initial request, we requested an elementary reading specialist because we have elementary reading specialists at grades one and two in the elementary. We needed one at three, four, five. We requested a middle school guidance counselor. The current caseload for middle school guidance counselors is about three-hundred-and-thirty-ish per counselor, and the recommended is two-fifty. So we're way out of compliance with that. High school special education teacher, because the increase at the high school in the number of kids on IEPs went from one-fifty to two-fifteen, which was a over forty percent increase. And that's really a compliance issue with sped guidelines. And also, we were out of, we are out of compliance in terms of our nursing staff. The recommendation is at the middle and high school levels that for every seven-hundred students, you have one full-time nurse. And we have many more students than that, both at the high school and the middle school. At the elementary schools, the recommended ratio is five-hundred to one, and the only school that's in compliance is Tucker. So what we, as it says here, allocated part-time increments. What we hope to do is to have nurses at all of the schools at key times, extra nursing staff on a part-time basis that would equal two full-time equivalent nurses, but non-benefited positions. All of these we achieved, well, we haven't achieved, sorry. All of these we requested to the Warrant Committee in our first pass. When we met with the Warrant Committee, we were encouraged to go back and look at the things that we had left out that were real needs of ours, important needs in the district that we had simply, as a matter of course, just left those out because what normally happens is that whatever we request is chopped, and we, we boiled it down to the bare bones, even bearer than bare bones. So they required, they said, if you don't request it, we can't give it to you, we need to consider what it is you need. And so we went back with a Tier Two request, and these are the items that are in the Tier Two budget request from the Warrant Committee. So, these aren't in any particular order, we haven't ranked them. We might need to rank them at some future date, but for right now, this is our Tier Two request to the Warrant Committee. One is the full-time high school and middle school of 504 Coordinator and a Career Counselor. So just as those IEPs are growing, as I said, by huge percentages, because as with our enrollment crisis, as more and more kids come into the district, more, we have more students on IEPs, we have more students on 504. So we need somebody to be the coordinator of 504s. As you might imagine, if you have a, a huge number of students on IEPs, which we do, it's well over six-hundred. I don't know the amount now, but it's over six-hundred students, which is like having an entire school, like being the principal of a school for our, for our Director of People Personnel Services. So those students tend to get quite a lot of focus, and we need a coordinator who's dedicated to the students on 504 plans. But we want to pair that with something that appeared, as my colleague Margaret Everhard reminded me, Margaret Everhard reminded me yesterday, something that appeared on the superintendent survey that you just saw at the beginning of this meeting, as a top five, just about across the board, is career, college and career readiness, right? So we definitely need somebody who's dedicated as a career counselor. The guidance counselors at the high school have over two-hundred-and-fifty caseload, over the recommended amount. It's not as bad as it is at the middle school, but it's still high. And so when they're taking care of real crisis issues, they don't have as much time to spend on things like career counseling. So that's a definite need. We also need a full-time middle school exploratory teacher. Some of those exploratory classes, these are not core classes, but some of the exploratory classes are, are getting really high in terms of the numbers of kids in those classes. And we want to try to keep the class numbers low, so that there's, you know, a better learning environment for the students. We're also asking for, which is a huge need, especially at this particular moment, a full-time pre-K to twelve behavioral health SEL specialist. We're hearing anecdotally about the tough time kids are having right now with things like anxiety and, you know, just feeling isolated and disconnected and all sorts of things that we really need somebody who's dedicated to working. And those, those issues are not just going to go away because the kids come, come back to school. You know, we're going to need to work some, through some of those issues as we come back. And a full-time paraprofessional. Oh, I know, it's, it's not a full-time paraprofessional, it's the equivalent of, it's, it's the, having elementary aides go from their point eight status to a full-time status, a point two addition for elementary aides, I believe. I hope I'm correct about that. Am I correct about that? Just nod if I am.
I think it was kindergarten aides, wasn't it?
Yes, it was kindergarten aides. So that, those are our Tier Two budget proposals. Let me get back to the regular screen, which I'm not doing well. Put this down. Okay, there we go. So first of all, any discussion about those requests, those needs as I went through them? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve- Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the tier two request in the FY 22 budget that will be presented to the warrant committee.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. And the only other thing I have to do in my presentation is to approve vendor warrants. I'm going to put them together. There are two. I'd like to make a motion to approve vendor warrant number 25 in the amount of $75,848.32 payable on December 23rd, 2020. And vendor warrant number 27 in the amount of $220,750.41 payable on January 7th, 2021. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? That's unanimous again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Craighead. So remember, we already explained that what we'll have a health and wellness report out at our next meeting. And then the last thing that, the last two things we have is approval of our December 2nd minutes. They were attached in our documents from Charlene. So hopefully everyone had a chance to look at them. I'm going to make a motion to approve those minutes again of the December 2nd, 2020 Milton School Committee meeting. Can I have a second? Second by Ada. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. And then next meeting agenda items, I'm just looking here. So on the, on the 7th, on the January 20th, we actually have Milton High School Site Council coming to report out to us. We have, we'll have health and wellness report out. We also, I didn't know, since we'll have health and wellness and we'll have site council. Is there anything about facilities that we can report out to? No? All right. So no.
No, no for that.
All right. So we'll have both health and wellness, Milton High School Site Council. Ada, initially it was going to be strategic plan and update, but do we have anything to add to that or can we strike that or? Oh, you're on mute, huh?
Yeah, I'd be able to do an update.
All right. I'll do an update on that. And then we'll also have, as under Chair's report, as Margaret Everhard said, a discussion on the listening sessions that we had on both the staff and, and the parent guard community for the permanent superintendent position. So if anyone else says anything else between then, you can email me and put it on. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Can I have a second? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, everybody.
Stay safe, everyone.
I know.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.